I have one, two, three, four, five. So I would like to start the meeting. It is six oh two and it's February twenty first and first. And it's my honor to open up the special board meeting. All remote, remote board meeting for purposes of conversations around our budget. It's good to see Lori and Ken here as well. And a few other people. So thank you very much. And so I've just called to order. And Susan, I'm wondering if you and your staff would like to sort of orient the board to the process of how you got to where you were. That gave us the new numbers that you were working on.
So I would say that it's been really the collaboration with our central office and our administrative team in the schools. That kind of got this ball rolling to see what were the actual true costs. To just moving of the board budget forward to the next year. Looking at all the inflationary costs, looking at a new bus contract that at at the beginning was worth a million dollars in the first year. And then, you know, really not looking for any new additions, but just really moving the budget forward in these inflationary times. And I would say it was the careful crosswalk with the board going through item by item, page by page. You know, looking at our budget very carefully, asking lots of questions. This whole team kind of took our budget books together and I know that Ken and Phil kind of looked at it, cross-referenced it. I brought in my notes. Lori and Ken really taking a close look on the staffing and the retirement section was a critical piece of this. Sam's work in facilities and Clint's work, looking at technology as suggested by, you know, Jay, could we use some DOD supplemental funds? To take over that. So a lot of these ideas came from the board. As we went through this and then we actually were able to glean some insight, which really brought us to a budget that was under three percent. And just over two million dollars, which you know, that's a lot of money. And we know that, and we've really considered, what does that mean to the taxpayer? Although we really don't get a full answer. I did talk to town manager Bert, but really he has to come in with his side of the budget, which ours is about half of the total. And to really understand that there is a lot more work to be done with mill rates and looking at the grant lists and all of that. So but just being cognizant of the portion that the townspeople have to pay, even though we do receive grants that help support this budget. You know, at least, you know, I would say close to forty percent of the budget is through the revenue sources. We even looked at the revenue sources and what they brought in after the budget seasons and we saw about ten million dollars that had come to the town directly in the name of education over the past since twenty eighteen, I believe. So we really did our homework and I think it's because the board has done their homework and asked a lot of serious questions that have caused us to kind of go back to the drawing board and to be able to do this. So I would start with, let's start with the adjusted budget. Because you've also indicated some other ways to take a look at things like health savings and OPEB that we want to unfold. You've got a lot of charts and graphs. And I want to make sure everybody understands and has time to ask some questions around them. But I think what would be good is if Ken, you could put up and share with the group, the superintendent's adjusted budget. And Ken, if you don't mind talking through the first section is really the first section that we outlined in the beginning.
Sure.
So if you could talk to them about from starting with bus contracts and doing some negotiating, I still haven't signed a contract, but we've certainly negotiated and felt like we've gotten a more reasonable beginning rollout of this.
Yeah, I agree. So up on the screen, I hope you can all can see this. This is the superintendent's adjusted budget. The first line, the yellow line there. Eighty-three million, oh ninety-eight, two hundred. This was what we started with. This is what is in the budget books that we have that we went through. And that represented a four point nine eight percent increase. And so as Susan mentioned, we went through line by line, taking into account all of the the thoughts that we were given as well as the very first line, line three. We did work with the lowest bidder on the, on the bus contract and we're able to work out a, an agreement with them to kind of shift some of those costs to later years. So it saved a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. To be, to be, to be pushed into future years of the contract. They also are covering the cost of the transportation software that was, that was a cost of five thousand seven hundred to our budget that we're able to take out. The next line down, line five. When we calculated the diesel fuel, diesel fuel and heating oil costs, when we put this together back in late November, the costs were quite a bit different than what they are now. And so we're able to lock in at a much lower rate. And so that's what's represented by that reduction of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. There were some additional retirements from that same, you know, back in November, we had five additional retirements that we are working into this budget that have that have given their notice for retirement. We do need additional school secretary at Groton Middle Schools. There is actually going the other way, thirty-eight thousand. We reduced custodial supplies by fifty thousand to be funded by RPESR as we've done in the prior year. And under for out of district special education, we, we do see that there is a a reduction in the amount of state placements. And so we are recommending reducing that by a hundred and ninety-two thousand. We are going through an RFP bidding process for our healthcare. And they have come back, Anthem had come back with a reduction of of about a hundred thousand dollars in that cost. And so that's being reflected there on line ten. We did get some of the reports from the town, the town pension reports and the workers' comp reports. And town pension was an increase, but the workers' comp was a decrease. And so those are represented there. We also got from the town, the, the cost of the SROs. So that was actually, we actually had to add three thousand two twenty. We did take a reduction in the teacher health immunizations that was proposed by the board. And then a reduction in some PD that can be funded either by DOD supplemental or perhaps the next DOD if we do get it. And so that's what brought us down to this line eighteen of a number of eighty-two million, two sixty-seven, which is a three point nine three that we talked about, I think the last time we got together. Line twenty, this is the health, health reserve reduction that we had proposed the last time we got together. It was actually in two pieces. We put that together. You know, taking this reduction, we bring it down to the same level that we have for this year. So it would match FY twenty-three. And that's what that represents. So putting that in reduces the overall budget to a three point six four percent increase. Then lines twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-five, we through some different scheduling, we feel like we can reduce the number of teachers. But line twenty-six, we're also cognizant that there's some positions on the RPESR that we're going to have to do something with after those funds go away next year. So the, the, the suggestion here is to reduce those four teachers, but then for the other teachers that are currently being funded through the RPESR to be to come on to the operating budget for this year.
And I just have to thank Mr. White Loft because he really brought that to attention. We've really been discussing what the cliff is going to look like and how we're going to sustain. You know, the positions especially. I mean, there's some tutors and, and other folks in the budget that we might have to reduce the number that we've had during COVID. But with these positions, we really saw that this was a good place to take advantage of not hanging on the cliff. And this will really absolutely benefit us going forward. So I thank Mr. White Loft for bringing that to the attention. It's something that's been discussed by lots of board members. You know, what do we do in the future? So we're, we're watching that very carefully.
So those two items together actually have zero impact on the budget, as you can see. That stays at three point six four because it's basically savings, but then putting it back in. Then lines thirty through thirty-three, this was suggested at the last, last meeting that we had. Where we took a look at the health reserve and health, healthcare reserve. And so we're proposing a reduction of four hundred thousand dollars. And then also allocating some, some of the increases in some of the tech costs, software and some instructional equipment and network costs. And having those be funded through the DOD supplemental. Instead of, instead of through the operating budget. So that brings us down to the eighty-one million, five-ten. Which is the two point nine seven percent increase. And then the just one little star at the bottom. They, there was a new law that was signed in where there's an increase to our special education excess cost grant. And so it's, it's, we're estimating an additional ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. It doesn't affect the budget numbers, but it will affect the, the amount of funding that we're getting from, from, from the state.
So keeping really close track of those revenue sources that come to the town, to the town manager that are for the benefit of education. And so that will really help us to have more insight on then what is the responsibility of the taxpayer in the operating budget?
So Ken, if you could just bring that down so I could see if anyone has questions that Thank you. Any questions from the board? I think we're going to come back to, to this probably as we kind of take a look at our
Yeah, we have some backup information that we can do a deeper dive, but certainly if anybody has questions now to be contemplating.
Is it the will of the board to kind of go through the additional information? Yes, sure. Let's do it.
I do have a question at your convenience.
Go ahead, Matthew.
I do have one concern. I, I really want to thank Jay. First of all, it's an area of his expertise and which one I am a very weak sister on finance. And he made a persuasive argument. Now that I have a mind, I have a heart and I have a belly. And my mind understands and my heart understands, but my belly is still a little uneasy on six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars out of the health reserves. Particularly when we know we have a shortfall in the OPEB. The other benefits for our retirees, we know we have a shortfall in that. So I'm wondering, I don't have, not advocating a position, I'm wondering how my colleagues would feel about the idea of making that second additional health reserve reduction only two hundred thousand. But using the two hundred thousand that we would take out of this budget to put that into our OPEB reserves and build up because we're going to need to do that.
So I would like to suggest that we let Ken and Lori talk a little bit to do the deeper dive. They've done a remarkable job looking at healthcare and what is our bottom line? What should we not go under? And also we've been really since since we really learned about OPEB, we've really been using end of the year funds, if there are any, to really pay back OPEB. And while you did get information that the OPEB, the town side of OPEB is a little stronger. The education budget is stronger with the health savings plan. So we do, you know, it almost balances each other because we do this kind of in tandem with one another. We do it together. So I, I would recommend that we look at that with Lori. I mean, we might be going out of order, but certainly if you want to take a look at the health savings and OPEB so we can have a heartier discussion on that. I think that would probably be a good way to do it.
However, you want to handle the discussion is fine with me.
Go ahead.
Go for it.
So we can start with, with healthcare or with OPEB. Let's, and I think we, we sense through some, some additional slides. We'll start with one thing that was requested at the last meeting and that was healthcare, history of healthcare. Let's see if I can make this bigger. Here we go. So this is the, the history of the health, health insurance claims. We went back to, to twenty fifteen. You can see that the, the cost and what was budgeted and a variance. What we also put into this was the number of large claims. It's one of the things that we really have to be cognizant of. As, as these large claims and we, we, we define large claims as those are that are over two hundred thousand dollars. One of the reasons that we track these so closely is that's our stop-loss limit. So that's the insurance policy that we have that helps, that covers claims that exceed the two hundred thousand dollar number. So the, the health insurance reserve will pay for the first two hundred thousand dollars. And then after that, the, the stop-loss policy would cover. And so one of the reasons that we put that in here is we did want to point out that in FY twenty-one, we did have upwards, we had eight large claims that year. And you'll notice off to the side under comments, we did indicate that twenty and twenty-one were COVID impacted years. And what that did was, and those were both large claim years. We had four in twenty twenty. That those, the fact that, that we had less regular claims coming through because, because there was postponed procedures and, and doctors' visits, it kind of afforded us the ability to be able to, to pay for these large claims. But if that was a regular year, like, like this year, that might have been a different result where we would have eaten into our reserve. Laurie, did you have anything additional that you wanted to? I know we talked about this numerous times.
Yeah, no, you got it, Ken. The only, the only other item is you know, you, there's certainly overall, we've run fairly well to the projection. However, I would point out, and you were probably going to say this, Ken, FY twenty-two, this is past year. We were at ninety, ninety-nine point eight percent of our, our healthcare claim projection. So we were very tight and a few more claims certainly would, we would have had to tap into the reserve as well. So when you look at FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, we're very close to that point in both years.
So that's
I think that's why that health reserve is pretty critical. You don't want to just go down to a corridor. If you have a bad year like that, we don't want to have to go back to the town to say we need more money. So.
So I'm going to take that down. And then I was going to share the next slide, which was the suggested healthcare reserve above corridor. And so what we've done here in the past, we've kind of looked at the reserve above corridor as being, you know, a number of months of, of, of claims. But we kind of took a little bit of a different look at it this time and kind of tried to identify those costs that can hit us in any particular year that we want to be prepared for. And so that's what this, this calculation does. On top, we have what we've talked about before is what's called a lasered stop-loss claim. And that's where the stop-loss insurance company has identified specific claims that, that they will, they'll only cover after it exceeds instead of two hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. And so that's, that's, that's a real exposure for us at this time.
So that difference is the four hundred thousand.
Right, yeah. Difference between the six hundred and the two hundred, correct. The other thing is, is those large claims, as you saw in the previous slide, our typical number of claims is somewhere around four. And we have the potential, and we, we put eight. I mean, the potential is unfortunately higher than that, but as far as our history, we, we've gone as high as eight. And so the potential excess claims is, is four over what we typically would expect to see. And if we, we have to cover the first two hundred thousand dollars of those claims, so that's that's a four times two hundred, that's where the eight hundred thousand dollar number right, right here comes from. And then we do have other lines of coverage and inflationary costs within this, within the reserves. And so we put another hundred thousand dollar amount in here. So, so the, the amount that we're suggesting for the reserve about corridor be maintained at is one point three million dollars.
And the corridor is used for really catastrophic, from what my understanding is, incidences.
Right.
So this, these are things, if we look at the history, these are things that could really happen. And so that bottom line of one million, three hundred thousand is pretty good number that we want to keep as a, the yellow zone for health.
And that's how we got to that four hundred thousand dollar number that you saw on the, on the, the adjusted superintendent's budget. You know, by taking that additional four hundred thousand, that's, that's where we predict the, that reserve will land at.
Oh, we don't want to take anymore.
Yeah, can I add one other?
Go under that.
Yeah, can I add one other comment, Ken?
Certainly.
So I just wanted to share just so that the board kind of has an understanding that the million three is what we're saying is kind of the threshold. We suggest we don't go below. If all of those things were to occur in one planned year, it would certainly bring our reserve to zero. So just so that everybody's clear, those things could all occur in one planned year. Or they could not. Right? So that's the risk. But these are more likely to, items more likely to occur in the course of a plan year versus like Susan said, catastrophic things we have not accounted for in this reserve. That would fall back to the corridor. If we had some serious catastrophic claim, for example, a very extremely high dollar prescription claim, which can run anywhere from a half a million to a million to two million dollars. There's some very rare diseases that have some prescription drugs now that they treat gene therapy drugs, which are extremely expensive. So if we were to be faced with something like that with the plan, we would suggest we use the corridor for that type of emergency situation. I don't think we need the, the reserve for that. The, we're, we're targeting the reserve more for the things that could kind of naturally happen in the course of a plan year that we would want to be accounting for from a risk perspective.
I can, I can also pull up the, the OPEB sheet that we put together. There isn't a lot
Before you do that, can I see Jay's hand raised? I'm just trying to capture who's raising their hand.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate the, the time and effort that Lori and Ken have put into analyzing this. My, my concern is that even during the COVID years, as we saw, you know, we, we did not dig into the reserve and certainly there is a, a worst case scenario. But with the exception of the lasered claims, we do have reinsurance backing up the other claims that aren't lasered. And so my point is, I just want to be able to, to go to the town council and the RTM and assure them that all available funds are being utilized to, to lessen the, the local taxpayer impact of the budget. And I, I just, I really appreciate this thoughtful analysis, you know, of what that that minimum should be. But again, to, to, to board members that are concerned, you know, there still is a twenty-five percent quarter. And, and Ken, could you remind me what that represents in terms of a dollar figure?
Yeah, so our, our annual claims are twelve to thirteen million dollars. So that would be three, three, three point two million.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to assure anyone that's thinking about it, that we would have to go through the entire reserve in the corridor before we would be unable to, to pay claims. And again, this is why we have reinsurance in place for the large claims. And even with the lasered, there's a, there's a limit. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Yeah, so. And these, the rates that are determined by Anthem, you know, they use, the, the reason that we pay them the fees we do is to, to properly project you know, what, what the rates for the the policyholders as well as what, what the board needs to put in every year. And I just don't want there to be more in there that needs to be. You know, that would work against the local taxpayer. Now, when it comes to OPEB, this is a longstanding issue that affects just about every municipality and Board of Ed statewide. And this is not something where we can wave a magic wand and, and fix it in this year. But I do look forward to hearing from the actuaries about, you know, where we stand. Unfortunately, that always, that report always seems to come out after we've approved our budget. And so we're, we're always, it's always a lagging report, but I'd be curious to see what, what Ken has at the moment.
So I, I can share what we, we, we kind of took what we did, what we had for the last report for OPEB. If I can find it here. Here it is. So the, the last report that we got from the, from the town for OPEB was for dated, not dated, but it was for the period ending or beginning July first of twenty twenty-one. We got that one around this time last year. And as you can see, that's the first box here. The accrued liability for the town is around forty-five million. And for the Board of Ed is about thirteen million. The assets that have been reserved for the town are twenty-six million or, or fifty-seven point two percent of, of that, of that accrued liability. Whereas the board has just under a million dollars, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand or seven point seven percent of, of, of the, the potential liability currently reserved for. So you can see that there's, there's quite a disparity between what the town has put aside for OPEB and what the board has. And this shows that for, this is for this year, the actuarially determined contribution was a little over, was a million, one million, one sixty-six for the, for the Board of Ed. And so that's what we're putting in this year, but the costs for this plan are, are some, are in that area. So what happens is that our value of assets doesn't rise that much because we're putting in and the plan is taking out about the same amount. So we, we have not yet gotten, we've gotten a version of the twenty-two valuation, but we have more questions than answers at this point. So we're, we haven't, we just got that today. So
So the ADC is the additional monies that are being allocated towards this fund.
Right, right. So that's the contribution that we make.
Right. And I, I had said to Ken, if we had the chart that looks at the town liability and value of assets on the health savings side and looked at the board, you'd almost see the opposite thing happen. So where we're supporting a large piece of the health savings, the town is not doing the same, but they've got more of theirs invested in OPEB is what I understand.
Take this down.
I'm going to ask a, maybe a, just a really silly question, but what are we putting? If we, if we pass the budget that Susan is suggesting that we, that we pass, what is the what is the amount of OPEB that we're putting in for this coming year?
So without having the, the new report, we are just assuming it's the same as last year, about one point one million dollars.
Unless we have those extra funds at the end of the year, which we've been trying to scoop up and add to it.
Right.
Matthew?
So I have a question. I guess it's for both Ken and Jay. If we were in lieu of reducing the proposed superintendent's budget from a four hundred thousand dollar a second additional health reserve to two hundred thousand, which would raise our proposed budget to eighty-one, seven-ten. Proposed budget to eighty one, seven, ten, and put that two hundred thousand in the OPEB. That would be an impact on our budget at eighty one, seven, ten of about one quarter of one percent of the total budget. In your opinion, might this be a wise way to go? I certainly have no way to judge that.
Um, well, as you can tell from, from what we just looked at, we, we are under, you know, quite under reserved and compared to the town. Uh, we're at seven point seven percent of, uh, of, of the accrued liability. So I, I always think it's a good idea to reserve something. Um. Uh, I, 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 I don't know, um, I'm not too sure I have an answer for, uh, what, what, what the right answer is, um. Um, all I know is what, what, what we have to, um. What we are putting in is what's the actuarially determined contribution, which is, which is the, the amount that needs to be in there at least to, to keep the fund going. Uh, without losing ground.
And remember at the four point nine percent. Increase of the, the total budget, that meant, um. The responsibility for the taxpayer was something like eight point four percent. Now that we've reduced it to the two point nine two, it's now under four or just around four percent.
Um, current nation with the current information that we have. Once again, John hasn't, they, the town council or the RTM have not necessarily approved their budget, but we have a big, we have a good guess.
Well, on the education side, I'm saying I can't, I can't handle, you know, their side is another additional piece. So we're only half of the total budget. So.
Jay?
The only thing I would say is, um. So the state, as I understand it, um. It has over thirty three billion in unfunded, uh, liability for, for OPEB. Um. It is not as though, uh, Groton or the Groton Board of Ed is in some unique position in not being one hundred percent funded on the. Um, on OPEB. And there are a lot of different opinions about that. Um. We are clearly making the necessary, uh, payments to make sure that the retirees are paid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, these actuarial projections change every year. We have not seen the, the new one. Uh, I would simply submit that putting two hundred thousand. Uh, toward a, um, uh. A, um. Fund, uh, which is as far in the hole as it is. Um. Is, is not a good use of the taxpayers' money. Um, the fund is not in any, uh, jeopardy of not making its payments. But obviously the state and all of its municipalities are going to have to make a decision at some point about. This unfunded, um, liability. Um, and if it was, if, if it were just us and it, and we could make a significant. Dent by making a, this contribution toward it. Um, you know, I certainly would be all for it, but, um. You know, I'm just, I'm just not convinced that that's a, a, a good use of the allocation of funds.
Thank you, Jay.
For what it's worth, I actually support Jay. I think if it was a large, if we could afford to do a large money and still keep what, what we're, um. Asking of the taxpayers to fund, I would suggest that, um. But. Andrea?
I was going to say the same thing that I, I would support you in this.
So, um, one of the things that I don't know if you need backup information, but that suggestion of looking at our DOD. Supplement funds and really earmarking that technology, which is historic, historic, even before I was here. Rita remembers, you know, that that's really been something that it's been earmarked for. And I think it's really been used so wisely. Um, in our technology expansion. Um, so if there's any need to look at that, I think that the, the chart actually shows us. If our numbers don't come in someday of having that close to twenty percent military. Um, dependent students, then that could affect us with the impact aid that comes to the town. And with this supplemental fund that comes to, to us. So I think it's worth taking a look at. I mean, it's the worst case scenario. We don't want to have to think about it. Our staff is working overtime to make sure every student is accounted for. Uh, we have sent out message and message that it's so important. For our parents to fill out those impact aid forms. And the closer we get to a hundred percent filled out. The closer we'll actualize the, the true number of students that are military impacted. So.
So this is, uh, this is the DOD supplemental, um, the yellow represents this year. Um, and this shows that, uh, at the end of this year, we intend, uh, this, uh, fund will be around, uh, a million dollars. Um, next, uh, next year, uh, FY twenty four. Uh, the ones in green, these are added in. This is what we adjusted on the, on the budget, um. On the, uh, superintendent's adjusted budget. Uh, so that's the impact that it will have, uh, here. And so. This would indicate that at the end of FY twenty four, we'd be somewhere in the seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollar range. For that, for this fund. And, and, and if we did not get, um, if we weren't receiving these funds, we would have approximately. Approximately two years worth of, of, of the Chromebook initiative, um, uh, uh. To, you know, to, to be able to fund that, um, uh, going forward.
And another year of the staff lease of technology.
Correct, yep.
Now, not that we want a worst case scenario. I never do. You know, my glass is always half full. But just the reality is that, you know, our, it is difficult to collect this data. We're working overtime, collecting it. And, um. You know, we just don't know that we're going to get the numbers with the, the good fortune of having Columbia's class subs being built here and stationed here. There, there are high hopes in that they'll really make sure that there's housing available with Balfour Beatty for our military folks. To start with, so that they are stationed here in Groton.
Stop sharing.
Any questions about? That? The supplemental?
I have questions, um, but not about that. So whenever you're moving on.
I, I think we're, we're moving on. So go for it, Rita.
Well, um, I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week and I'm not sure whether or not you discussed this. Um. But I had asked for a list of additional cost savings to bring the budget even further reduced. Um, I, I haven't seen anything in writing from the superintendent about that. I don't know if I missed it.
I would say this was our very best effort, that the, the other things were really things that needed to continue to happen. There was no.
Well, that's not.
No chance of a one percent this year.
That's not, that's not what I was talking about. If the board decides that the budget should be, let's say, two percent. We would get a list of things starting, I mean, they used to go even with sports and I mean, it went on and on and on. That the board could deliberate over in terms of, you know, do we need as many administrators in our middle school? And high school, how much would that savings be? I also wanted to, um. Know a little bit about where I couldn't find in the budget exactly like where snow plowing would be. And since we didn't use that so much this year, well. What would it was going to be carried over to next year? Or is there a, you know, how, how do we? You know, many of the towns now are saying, you know, they plowed the streets once and maybe we'll do it maybe one or two more times, but. We're kind of getting to the end of winter. So I'm just not sure what was projected for next year. I couldn't quite find it in, in the budget. I was looking, but I haven't been able to exactly pinpoint it.
Um, uh, so I have an answer on the snowplow, uh, amount.
Yes.
So.
That's great.
Under, uh, under function, uh, twenty five, ten operations and maintenance, I'm on page five, nine, three. It's, uh, it's line number four, two, two, snow removal. Um, and, and of course, we, we don't know, right? Uh, so we did, we budgeted the same amount that we budgeted for this year, which was fifty thousand dollars. We haven't used fifty thousand dollars this year. Unfortunately, we can't carry that over, um, but, um. Um, uh, it would, it would be, it would be our hope that we would, uh, not spend any more than that next year, but it would really be dependent upon.
Right, but we could use part of that for, let's say, some additional supplies this year or something else that we were going to purchase. For next year, that could be purchased by the end of June this year.
Right, yes, correct.
If we don't use that in our budget, we could reduce something else by purchasing it in June, right?
Correct.
So Tim just gave me the word Rita that he's going to be out with the mixed conditions we're expecting overnight. So I know we haven't had the tremendous snowfall, but there's been a lot of sanding going on and slippery, really slippery sidewalks. So I know that they've been really trying to keep ahead of that, so.
Sure, yeah, I'm not saying cut it or anything. I just said, I know that there might be an excess that we could possibly use for something else. If there is this year. Um, and you know, I, I wasn't sure, we talked about cave dues. What the, if you had a discussion about that, wh- what are possible reductions that we could have? We didn't, I had asked about the central office, um, increases for next year. Did you talk about that last time? I mean, uh, to me, this budget is still a little high for, for, in my, for me. So, um, I see some cuts here and there, but not. Nothing that is really significant, significantly. So that, that's how I feel about it.
I, and if, if the board members who were present, um, can kind of help me with my wording, but I think what we looked at Rita. Is that the, that we were com- that the, the members of the board that were present were comfortable with what had the budget. We needed to bring it down, um, because we wanted to be, have it, um, to be good stewards. Um, and, and for the burden of the taxpayer. And that was the whole conversation around the healthcare corridor and, and asking Ken. Um, and, and Susan and the staff to kind of come back and, and tell us what is the, what is the lane? That we, um, need to go to. I do know what you're in reference to in terms of we had, you know, a one percent, two percent, three percent. I think that this is just a different variation and this is the variation that we stayed with this year.
Okay. Well, I can't support, I can't support this, but that's just me. I know other people will feel differently.
Okay, no, I, absolutely. You have every right for your opinion and I appreciate your opinion and I hear what you are saying. So thank you. I don't want you at all to feel like you are being cornered into something.
I, I, I don't feel that way. I just asked for something that I wasn't provided, so.
Okay. Jay?
Um, the only thing I was going to mention is, I do know that there are. Uh, districts, I guess, who, who come out with the doomsday scenarios, you know? If we don't get our budget, you know, we're going to cut all the sports, we're going to cut. Music, everything like that. And, you know, those tend to be sort of made up and they don't really mean it. Um, I, I was, I was glad to see that, that, that Susan. Um, was able to find efficiencies with the four FTEs. Um, you know, that's the real savings, um, at, you know, a, a, at the risk of, of, um. Repeating what Susan says all the time, what the, the major part of the budget is the, the staff and the benefits. And so through the efficiency study that they did to come up with those four, and then. I think the beauty of it is that then we took four FTEs out of Esser because that's a cliff. That we're going to be facing. And while we are actively pursuing, you know, I know that Susan and her staff are actively pursuing grants all the time. You know, we, w- we're still going to reach the, the possibility between that and alliance and everything else. Um, where it's just not going to be sustainable. And so I was glad to see us moving in, in that direction. And I think that's a really positive. Uh, point. In terms of whether we do one or two percent. Um, on certain raises, uh, or, you know, Dr. Griner, you. Was always famous for saying, we're not going to balance this budget on paper and pencils. You know, there's just so much we can cut. And this really tracks the, the increase. In the cost of the, the personnel and the benefits, this percentage increase. But we were also. Blindsided by this increase in the, the transportation costs. Um, which, you know, I know, you know, we, we bandy about the inflation, uh, but I mean, that really hit. Uh, hard in my opinion. And, and these are the drivers of the, of the budget. After, um, I don't want to get into the details, but after the four o'clock meeting we had today. With, uh, AGSA and GEA. Um, I'm a little concerned about this being the year. Uh, to, to cut administrators, given we're continually learning about this. These unfunded mandates coming from the state. And not only an unfunded mandate, but a system that in my opinion is a little questionable. Um.
A failed system.
Uh, what's that?
A failed system.
Yeah, and, yeah, so I'm not going to get into all those details, but I, I think that given that and, and also some of the other. Issues we're hearing about, you know, in the operations of the schools, I, I, I really can't support. Um, cutting any other additional staff. And I, again, I don't think we're going to do it based on supplies. Um. The other thing we always have to be worried about is that. You know, it just takes one or two special ed placements. And this budget. It, you know, blows up. Um, we're, we're always walking that. Uh, that tight rope, so. Uh. I support what has been done here. Um, and personally, I don't see some huge account that we can. Um, take money out of, um, that will somehow, you know, bring it much lower. You know, we could whittle away, we could say, well, cut all the. You know, the side budgets by some arbitrary figure. Um, but I just, um, I just personally can't support that. And I do.
Those were reduced already because those, they came in at one percent, not two. So they really did take a serious look when they. Prepared those budgets too.
Right. And we know that the inflationary pressures on those, uh, accounts, you know, are, are higher. So i- at the end, we're probably getting less. For, for more. Um, but again, that's sort of beyond our control. Um, I, I just, I think that, that Susan and her staff have done an excellent job in scouring this and, uh. Um, so I'm prepared to, to support this.
Thank you. I just don't want to see is any staff cuts that would impact our students in the classroom. So that's always my concern. That's why. Having four administrators in a middle school and a high school, that to me is the only place that I see. I don't want to reduce teaching staff. I want our class sizes to be small. Um, so that I'm just looking for efficiencies and that's, I know it's staffing is so much of our budget. So that's the only thing I could think of to help reduce this, to bring this down a little bit.
But, uh, a- again, I'm, I'm sorry, Kim, but, uh. What I heard today was our administrative burdens are in- increasing due to the state and.
Um, I, I didn't find that. I didn't hear that at all. I heard that with, what, that was from the special education teachers, the burden. It's, it's, it's on them. The counselors aren't picking up. There aren't, you know, and it's, it's all on the special teachers. I didn't hear the administrators saying, oh, well, we'll help you out. It was all the teachers doing it.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they're doing at the, the building level, uh, but I just don't think that, you know, with, with. There, there are a number of, of things going on in, in the buildings that I'm not sure that, that cutting that, that staff at this point. Um, it just, it doesn't make sense to me, but that's just me personally. And I certainly, I appreciate your point of view, um. Uh, and, you know, it's just, I, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it.
Are there other comments from the board? Andrea? And you're muted.
Thank you. I, I would just support what Jay was saying and of course what Susan said. And having been in the administration. And having been in the administration, I know that as as the student population grows, the amount of attention that the children require grows exponentially. So I would be in, uh, support retaining all of the administrations that, administrators that we have. Because of, uh, the safety and the student, uh, and the, uh, well-being of the students, as well as their educational richness.
I would also add that we've heard a lot about not only the, um, need to accelerate learning and to provide differentiated instruction, but also the mental health piece, and administrator not only is caring for the school and the management of the building, but they are the instructional leaders, and they're there also to support the teachers, because you heard our GEA and AGSA talk about them, that, you know, it's been really difficult these past three years. And as much as we're coming back to community, we're not all the way there. People are still getting sick. Faces are still needing to be covered. Peter mentioned again, the need for subs in Paris. So that, those are the people who are overseeing, making sure that that is all taken care of, and they have to evaluate and take care of their staff, support their staff. So, um, I think it's really an essential ingredient, especially now more than ever before.
So if the RTM or the town council tells us that our budget's going to be two percent, they don't agree with what, you know, what we've done, or what's, what, what is going to be submitted, what will we do? We meet back again, and we talk about more additional cuts, correct? Is that right, Kim?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, if they, if they cut us by that much. Um, and that has happened, and
Yes.
Yep, we would need to come back and, um, kind of talk, talk about that. I would also hope um, that's, I I hope that doesn't happen. I hope that Susan and Ken would kind of indicate to us what that would look like. And the reference that Jay meant in terms of of like putting band and sports and whatever, I think
Oh, no, I don't, I never agree with anything like that.
No, 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 you know that, but that's unfortunately, there are
I've seen it happen, but I wouldn't be one of those who wanted to cut the hockey team and have the, all the kids in the hockey uniform. That's just, that's causing drama and drama and all that stuff. It's just not, not in the daily work to do that.
I absolutely a hundred percent agree. I don't mind chaos, but that would be, um, that's a drama that we don't need to put anyone through, because that's just a headache. Jay? That's to say, Jay, that you are a heartache. That's, I mean, that that sentence kind of like blended, but you're not a heartache.
Well, I'm I'm sure, uh, I I am with some people. Um, however, um, I just want to to say something, this is going to sound very familiar to you. Uh, to those of you who've been on the board for a while, and that is, I feel very confident going to the town council and saying that this is a level service budget. We are not putting any huge new programs into place. This is to provide, you know, the bare minimum of what we're doing, you know, currently. In a very, you know, volatile sort of economic time. And so, you know, could we, could we make some, uh, you know, theoretical cuts? Could we cut the maintenance budget, say another twenty-five percent, just just, you know, to to bring it down? I mean, you know, if something happens, I mean, we saw what happened with, uh, you know, one of the buildings where you know, uh, we're, we're dealing with an an emergency. We don't want to go back to, uh, the town council for a supplemental. Um, because of, um, and and you know, not throwing out any worst case scenario, but these, th- these budgets are very are 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 very tight. Where are we right now, Ken? If you could just sort of remind us, where are we, uh, in the current year? Over or under?
Yeah, uh, we're, we're projecting about fifty thousand dollar, um, um, excess for the end of the year.
Yeah.
And that's been pretty steady throughout the year. We've not had a lot of excess, even though um, we've heard, and people have surmised that there must be additional funds, even though we've not hired all those positions, but it's been pretty tight. And I've asked the principals to hold off on that last twenty-five percent until we see our way clear.
Okay, let me just, let me just say this one more time. You're projecting that we're going to have a fifty thousand at the end of the year.
Yes.
Which has, which as a percentage of our entire budget is uh, almost incalculable.
Well, it's below one percent, um, certainly.
Any other questions, comments before we move? I'm, uh, Liz.
I just have to say that I want to say thank you to everybody who's worked on this budget. And I do believe that this is the best, what we, the best we can do at this time. I do not want to see our teachers not being supported through a lack of people being able to do observations, to be able to be available for them. I do not see, and I would never support, and I'll make this public right now, I will not support any cuts towards administrative staff, ever. And I will, I think we need, because teachers and students both need support. And I will not, you know, if there's any way that we can do other things, then that's what we would have to do. But I just wanted to be very clear about my position on that. But Susan and Ken and Lori, I think you've done a great job, and I, you know, and your staff, and I want to say thank you.
Thank you. It's really all the directors, you see them on on the screen. Everybody has really risen to the occasion. We've all really um, looked at everything and, you know, things in our besser that have been done just this weekend, we put in a new air conditioning system at Fitch High School and the whole auditorium area in the vintage side, kind of. And that, we didn't have to write a CIP for that. So we had nearly a million dollars for looking at our HVAC systems to really fix the things that needed to be fixed, and we prioritize them. And so that was, you know, a really incredible job. And Sam was out there with them over the weekend, making sure it was happening. So it's really teamwork. And it's teamwork not only with the the staff, but with this board to make this happen.
So. Are you, are we ready? Do we have all the information that we need to move forward on a vote?
Yes.
All right. Let me just, before we make a motion, I am really sorry, Ms. Katie is all over my Okay. And, um, William, if you could just be, so we could see your face, because I would want to make sure that our count is correct. Ms. Joan, you're ready for a count, once I, uh, once the motion gets set and seconded? All right, um, does someone want to make the motion?
There's, please. I'll move the budget.
Okay, so the motion will be, then, I will then read the motion, I just then will need a second to approve the, um, FY twenty-four budget in the amount of eighty-one million, five hundred and ten six hundred and twenty-seven. I didn't say that correct, but those are the numbers. Which is a two point nine seven percent increase over the FY twenty-three budget. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have Liz. Is there a discussion?
Question. Does this have to be unanimous?
No, we just have to have a majority vote.
Okay.
Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please say, please raise your hand so that Joan and I can count. So one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those oppose? One. And I don't think that that counts for all of us, so we have no, uh, no, no absences. With Bev and Dean not present.
Right.
The motion has passed. Board, what this means is that it's now our budget. And so very soon, um, so Susan and her staff have to get it to the town manager by the twenty-eighth um, to meet the needs of our, to meet the demands of of the charter. Um, it then goes to the town council. I believe that the, we need to be walking out for the public hearing. Um, and, um, I am hoping that we can drum up support from our, um, the district for people to come, uh, to the, to the town meeting, um, public hearing to support the needs of our budget. Um, and we then go from there to the RTM, so, um, we still have, um, we still have a lot of the road to travel. Um, but once again, I just want to say thank you very much to the board, um, for the very thoughtful, um, conversations. I always learn so much by hearing where other people are coming from. I thank you very much for that. To Susan, to Ken, to Lori, and to the staff. Um, I also want to say thank you very much for the hard work that you've put in this. We have been together since January fourth, folks, every week without, with, without at any break. Um, so, um, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, do I have a second?
Where's Jay?
Jay was second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Right. Um, all those opposed? Motion has carried. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Right.